Cali, California, Wednesday, January 19th. The first. I will start again. Call to order the regular meeting of the planning commission for the city of San Clemente, California, Wednesday, January 19th, meeting. Commissioner Prescott, would you like to lead us?
Absolutely. Would you all join me, please? Yeah.
I'd like allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, or which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Atamian, would you read the roll?
Commissioner Prescott?
Yeah.
Commissioner McCacken? Do not see him. Commissioner Cosgrove?
Here.
Commissioner Camp?
Here.
Chair Pro Tim McCann?
Here.
Vice Chair Tyler?
Here.
And Chair Crandall?
Here.
The next item is item four, special orders of business and special presentations. We have none today. We have two sets of minutes for review. Do any of the commissioners have any revisions or a motion on the December 22nd minutes of the study session?
I'm making a motion to approve December 22nd study session.
Motion by Commissioner Prescott. Do we have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Camp seconds. We'll have a vote. Commissioner Prescott?
I.
Commissioner Carter?
I.
Commissioner McCann?
Abstain. I wasn't there.
Commissioner Cosgrove?
I watched the tape, so I'm going to vote I.
Commissioner Camp?
Hi.
And Commissioner Crandall is also an I, so we have a five, one, five oh one one. And one of absent. So do we have a motion on the regular planning commission meeting of December 22nd? Any revisions or a motion?
I'll make the same motion for this meeting, December 22nd, 7:00 p.m., the regular meeting.
Motion by Commissioner Prescott. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Camp. And we'll do a call vote. Commissioner Prescott?
I.
Commissioner Tyler?
I.
Commissioner McCann?
Abstain.
Commissioner Cosgrove?
Again, I watched the, the video, so I'll, we'll vote I.
Thank you. And Commissioner Camp?
Hi.
And Commissioner Crandall is also an I. So once again, it was five oh one and one absent. The next item is the consent calendar, which we have no items today.
Chair Crandall?
Yes.
We go back to item six, oral and written.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you very much. Next item is oral and written communications. Adam, do we have any?
We do not have any written communications.
And, and I don't see any cards for oral, so we will move on to item seven, the consent calendar, which we have none. And to item eight, the public hearing. We have one item this evening, a master project 21158, Frontera Memory Care and Assisted Living Facility, APN 679 021-05 Southwest Corner of Caia Frontera and Caia Oliverde. Stephanie Rojas is presenting this, and she is online. So Stephanie, you have the chair.
Good evening, Chair Crandall and members of the planning commission. Can everybody see my PowerPoint presentation okay?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, the applicant proposes to subdivide a two and a half acres of a vacant parcel located at the intersection of Caia Frontera and Caia Oliverde. The site abuts the I-5 freeway, single-family residences, multifamily condominiums referred to as the Fair Harbor Neighborhood, and Pacific Coast Church. The outlets are located across the freeway. The site is located in the institutional area of the Marblehead Inland Specific Plan. The property is currently owned by the Pacific Coast Church. As noted in the staff report, in March 2020, the city approved entitlements for the Artist Memory Care Project at the same site. However, due to the pandemic, that project was not pursued. The current applicant, South Bay Partners, proposes to develop the site with a similar state-licensed residential care facility. However, because the operations, services provided, and the overall building configuration are unique to each individual operator. And so for those reasons, the city is requiring the applicant to obtain new entitlement approvals. This master project includes applications for a conditional use permit, architectural permit, and site plan permit. The previously approved specific plan amendment and tentative parcel map are still valid. The project is a state-licensed residential care facility for the elderly. It consists of a 24-bed memory care component and a 63-unit assisted living component. The project totals just over 80,000 square feet of building area. The facility will have employees present 24 hours a day, seven days a week. This includes an onsite nurse that will oversee the care of its residents. The applicant prepared a safety and operations plan, which was provided to you as attachment three. And that plan provides further details on staffing, security measures to protect its residents, health screening of staff, and back-to-bed procedures for non-emergencies. The applicant proposes to construct an access driveway wholly contained on the adjacent parcel, which would serve both the project and future development on the remaining vacant parcel. A left-turn pocket will be added on Caia Frontera as required by the city's traffic engineer. Located here, the proposed site plan shows a small parking lot and a visitor drop-off area located at the front of the property. This facilitates a safe and convenient resident drop-off and pickup situation. And overall, it improves the vehicle circulation of the site. The rear parking lot, which will be used primarily by employees, is oriented towards the rear of the property. This would allow the parking lot and the trash enclosure to be hidden from public and freeway views. The, the design review subcommittee reviewed the project twice in October and August of last year. The applicant took great care to design the project, keeping in mind potential view impacts to the single-family residential neighborhood across Caia Frontera. And as such, no part of the roof exceeds the 25-foot height limit of the zone. Overall, the design review subcommittee found the project represents a substantial improvement over the previously approved design. The two-story design allows for enhanced variation within the building form and shape. The current proposal uses articulation techniques such as upper-floor balconies, a brick veneer base, and window openings to break up the roof and building mass. The Marblehead Inland Specific Plan establishes minimal standards for the institutional planning area. However, of those requirements, the project complies with all applicable development standards, which are listed here on the table. Overall, institutional uses are intended to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis through this discretionary review process. An environmental analysis was prepared by the city's consultant. The applicant additionally prepared technical studies to supplement that CQ report. With regard to parking, the zoning code allows the parking demand to be determined through a study. And using a conservative approach, the study calculated parking demand using multiple methods. Overall, the study concluded that the 52 spaces that are provided onsite is sufficient to meet the project's projected parking demand. The CQ analysis also provides details on how the, how the project complies with the city's noise ordinance and how the proposed use would not impact traffic circulation in the area. Overall, the proposal is consistent with the general plan, the zoning ordinance, Marblehead Inland Specific Plan, and design guidelines. The project was designed to be compatible with the scale, density, and residential character of the surrounding neighborhood. The building complies with the 25-foot height limit to minimize potential view impacts to homes across the street. Furthermore, the applicant proposed a series of community outreach presentations. Input from the community was incorporated into the final design. For example, the applicant agreed to enhance the landscaping along Caia Oliverde, abutting the Fair Harbor condos, which is depicted in this rendering on this slide. So for these reasons, staff recommends the planning commission first determine the project is exempt from CQ pursuant to Section 15183. And second, adopt a resolution approving the project with conditions of approval. This concludes staff's presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. Before we ask questions of staff, I think I'd like to open it to the applicant because they may answer any of your questions. And we have Mr. Mark McGuire representing the applicant.
Thank you. Excuse me. So is there a PowerPoint? I, I have just a few slides that I, if they're teed up, then I can start my presentation. Perfect. Thank you. And I'll just say next slide when it's necessary thing. Perfect. Okay. Good evening, Chairman Crandall, members of the planning commission. My name is Mark McGuire, San Clemente resident and land use attorney. I'm very pleased to be here tonight on behalf of South Bay Partners. I've testified before this commission over the years many, many times, but this is the first time I get to speak in front of six of the new commissioners, and I just want to congratulate you all on your appointments and thank you for sitting on our planning commission. I also want to thank the city staff. Stephanie Rojas, of course, has done an outstanding job under quite trying circumstances, as usual. And the entire development management team has been thorough and efficient in its review of this project. I also want to thank the members of the design review subcommittee for their review and input on the project in the two meetings that we had with the committee. As explained in the staff report, this project replaces a prior approved residential care facility for the elderly referred to as the Artist Project, but it is also the culmination of a long effort by Pacific Coast Church to sell a portion of the vacant parcel it owns next to its existing church facilities. Prior to artists, the church was in escrow with Lennar Communities. And Lennar started an entitlement effort to construct 75 townhomes on the site. Next slide, please. The townhome proposal was not too popular with the neighbors, and it hit several planning and design snags as well. And this slide shows on the top half is a, as a visual of our project. And below is the, the submittal that Lennar had submitted to the city, but eventually withdrew. After Lennar withdrew its application, the artist entitlement began, which I worked on. And it was exactly 23 months ago tonight that the planning commission approved the artist project before it moved on to the city council. Unfortunately, we all know too well what's been going on over the past 23 months, and artists decided not to move forward during a pandemic. Still, good things come from bad, and I'm proud to say that the South Bay Partners project is an even better facility, in my opinion. Is a combination of memory care and assisted living, which operators will tell you works extremely well. The basic site configuration, and you can go to the next slide, please, is very similar to the artist project in terms of where access comes off of Frontera and where the primary parking lot is located behind the building and next to the freeway. However, where the project, the project is also fully consistent with the 25-foot height limit, even though it has a second-story component. However, where the project improves upon the artist plan, in my opinion, and in the opinion of your staff, is the design. For example, the front door of the project now faces Frontera rather than having the main entrance face sideways from the street. This creates a clear entrance, which is defined by a port de chaire and a small guest parking lot. This slide showed, the next slide, if you would go on to that, shows a side-by-side comparison of the Frontera street elevation compared to the elevation of the artist project. I can tell you that artists really struggled with the top-heavy aspect of the roof, which you can especially see in this elevation, where the roof dominates. Artists did what it could by adding some dormer windows, but the current design, I think, works much better. Peter Petraglia, the project architect who is here tonight, has really done an excellent job designing this building. Another, if you could go back to slide three. Yeah. Another small change, but I think is important, is that we used to have the trash in the very back top corner in this slide, which was somewhat close to one residence in the Fair Harbor Townhome. We've been able to move that trash into the center part of the building that would just about midway down the access drive so that the, the trash will not have to go to the back to, to get trash on a regular basis. So I think that's a nice change that was made as well. And as Stephanie said, we'll be working with the Fair Harbor Community Association to make substantial landscape enhancements along Caia Oliverde. South Bay Partners is in agreement with all the proposed conditions of the approval, of approval for the project, and we are asking for approval tonight. I would also like to say that South Bay has no intention of leaving Pacific Coast Church at the altar the way artists unfortunately had to. In fact, South Bay is anxious to proceed. We have project team members here to answer any questions you might have. But before that, I'd like you to hear from Patrick McGonigal of South Bay Partners, who is here all the way from Dallas, Texas. Jim Biggs of West Bay Senior Living, which is the operator, and it's here all the way from Buena Vista Street in San Clemente, and Pastor Mark Ambrose of Pacific Coast Church. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. And good evening. I am Patrick McGonigal, the senior of South Bay Partners. We are a Dallas-based senior living developer. We've been developing exclusively senior housing facilities since 1994, and over that time period, we developed over 10,000 units. Obviously, the senior living management is very important. Our seniors, we always partner with local management companies. But this is no different than this project. West Bay Senior Living is based in Orange County. But Jim Biggs is living here in San Clemente, so we're extremely excited about that to be working with our project. It's very exciting when I saw this site, and the artists didn't move forward, but I was excited that they did not, because it gave us a great opportunity. Thank you for your consideration and time for this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
And good evening. I am Jim Biggs. As you heard, I'm over in Buena Vista. I used to live out in Del Mar, right down the street. It's a big, big fan of San Clemente. I've lived here three years. I've been in senior housing 35 years. I teach over at University, in addition to being the CEO of West Bay Senior Living, I teach at University of Southern California about senior living as well. This is a terrific project that's going to make the community proud. It's about options. It's about choices. And this offer is a choice that's not currently available to seniors here in San Clemente. We appreciate any consideration you could offer, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you.
The name, my name is Mark Ambrose, and I'm lead pastor at Pacific Coast Church. I just wanted to give you a little bit of, if you're interested, a little bit of the human side slash our journey. I've been a PCC now for 27 years. So I was vitally involved in the purchase of this property when we bought it from the diocese of Orange back in the day. So this property has become very personal to me and the leadership at the church. So it wasn't easy for us to decide to sell a portion of it. But the genesis of that was, do we really need it, given our vision and how big we want a facility in San Clemente versus planting other churches? And so then we came to this conclusion that we would sell two and a half acres. Since then, I've, we've been in escrow for six years with three buyers. And so I've learned a lot about the real estate industry, didn't intend to do so, but have. And I learned also a couple of things that I believe God has just done over the last six years. As, as Mark mentioned, we were in escrow with Lennar with 75 condos, and that was an up-go plan. More green space, more affordable units, and just it blew the deal out. Then we started exploring this, you know, residential care for the elderly market. And that's, that's how we met artists and felt that just a better, was a better fit for us and for community. And of course, that fell apart literally almost a week before escrow was going to close. And we hit the pause button for about three months for the summer and then went back to that space again. And that's when we met South Bay and have been in escrow ever since. And it's been a great relationship. And part of that piece is where we're excited not only about this coming to a close after so long, but the kind of neighbors that we'll have. I, you know, I mean, 75 condos, I suppose you could say is good for the community, but I think this type of care facility is a better win for the community. It's, it's a deep need over the years. I mean, we're all at that age, the next 20 years, we may be clients. But secondly, we have one neighbor instead of 75. And so we're looking forward to that, just having one neighbor working well together. So to be a benefit to the community of one neighbor is a real blessing from our perspective. So we're hoping this will work out and finally move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will open it to the commission to ask questions of staff and the applicant. But before we do that, I want to acknowledge that Commissioner McCacken joined us at the beginning of the presentation and was here for the entire presentation, just not for roll call. Any questions of the applicant?
I have a question for the applicant. I guess it'd be for Mr. McGuire. Thank you for your bringing the project and, and bringing it along. I, I sat on the design review subcommittee, as you know. And I guess I'd like for you to just describe what community outreach you guys made and what the attendance and response was of the, to those community outreach meetings.
Happy to do that. Commissioner McCann. So it, as the staff report points out, we did reach out to the Master Homeowners Association for all of the Marblehead community and presented the project there. And it was very well received there. They all thought that it was, again, similar to how they responded to the artist project, a very appropriate use for the site, designed with the 25-foot height limit in mind, which is paramount in a lot of the residents' minds, and they were very happy with the project design. Very productive meeting. Similar meeting occurred with the sub-association of the condominium community. And I would add that because it's a condominium community, all, I think, 140 residents get mailed notice of this meeting, not just the ones within 300 feet. Many of those condos are well beyond 300 feet, but they all were noticed on this project. That, that meeting also went very well and, but they did express an interest in augmenting the landscape along the common edge along Caia Oliverde, which we're more than happy to do. And then we had, we mailed to 50 or 60 residents within 300 feet of the property, not just the property owners, but also if there are any renters, we've mailed to the addresses themselves. And that was a very small turnout. It was an open house at, at the church. But the residents that did show up were supportive. One resident was interested in changing out some street trees, and she was interested in how the view corridor for her own unit was preserved, which it happens to be, because the parking lot is in that lower area there, which is how those condos really are oriented across the site. And so she was very happy, and other than that, it was an uneventful and very low-attended meeting. So that's, that was the extent of the outreach, which was very, very similar to the outreach that we had for the artist project. So I'm happy to report that it's been. And I don't, there's anyone here tonight.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
I have a question, maybe for Stephanie. Can you share with me the institutional land use, how this does, is designated for that? Do you have like a definition you could share on this property?
Sure. Thank you for the question, Commissioner Prescott. Give me just one vote.
Let me put it to you a different way.
Okay.
What, what makes this property the, under the terms of institutional land use? Just so I understand.
Yeah, so those designations were actually established long ago when the Marblehead Inland Specific Plan was first master-developed. And this area was specifically carved out for the church, which at the time had intended to build out their full campus with a daycare and other different types of uses that you find, you know, commonly associated with a church use. So that was when the institutional, you know, land use designation was established long ago. As everybody knows, that area of the church was never fully built out. So this proposed use meets the, the definition of institutional because it's not really residential, it's not really commercial, it kind of falls in this in-between where it serves, it's a state-licensed facility, but it also serves a, an institutional use in that it provides, you know, medical and health services to the community. So this project is very much in line with that institutional intent. And one thing that I will also highlight, just for some additional context, was that the Marblehead Inland Specific Plan is very odd and unique. It's very unlike other specific plans we have in the community. So in terms of the list of permitted uses, when they first created it many decades ago, they had simply listed that church and daycares could be permitted in this zone, which is very, you know, limiting. It doesn't really, you know, represent the full range of institutional uses that are, you know, still consistent with that zoning designation. So in 2020, when the Artist Memory Car, Memory Care Project moved forward and was entitled by the city, the applicant did undertake a specific plan amendment to propose specific text changes to that document to clarify what additional uses could be permitted in the institutional zone through the CUP process. So I do want to clarify that, that as part of that prior, you know, set of entitlements, there was some clarifying language that was incorporated into the specific plan to specifically allow for memory care facilities and assisted living facilities to be permitted at the site with a CUP.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you share with me on the stormwater, since this is, has a few acreage? Or maybe I should ask Mr. McGuire as far as how, how, what has been designed for, for stormwater?
Thank you for the question, and I think that was a great response by Stephanie.
It was.
And again, we, when we went through the artist project, the question of, was it consistent with the general plan institutional designation was answered yes, and so we did not take, need to take an amendment to the general plan up when it was approved by the council. On the stormwater, the, we do have a representative of this, of the civil, but I think I can answer the question. The project is a, what they call a priority project. It's oversized, that we'll have to treat all of its stormwater runoff, break storms, break the gutters in a way that, that drain into planter areas and what have you. But the primary treatment is that it will go into a, what they call engineered wetland systems, which are in the parking lot. And we also have the capacity, again, final design will be, you know, post, you know, post-project approval, but before building permit. We have the ability to store water in an underground cistern sort of system that to then meter out the water through the wetlands to make sure that you're getting the right resident time through the wetland for water quality. It then does go through the storm drain system in Marblehead coastal as well, which has a very large detention basin that has an extended detention time for wetland treatment and for water quality treatment as well before it goes to the ocean. So that's how.
Okay, don't leave yet.
Okay.
I have just a few more questions. You seem to be very good at answering them, so I'll just keep you up there. Can you share if you have any type of vision for energy savings, solar, battery storage, anything for the property?
That, that also is an excellent question. I'm, and I know Peter Petraglia, the architect, is here if we need more detail. But I know that we're required to have if the building be solar-ready pursuant to code, the site, it, it has roof areas that are flat that are, would lend themselves to solar, but I don't know really whether that's something that's anticipated or not. They're, they're at that point, at that, at this point, though, there's not necessarily, that I know of, a commitment to.
And if those panels would be to the house on top of the roof, would it be still under the?
Absolutely falls within.
Is there any room in the parking lot for solar panels, anything like that?
There is not, and we do not have the same intention of that other project that has solar panels. That would not be.
Okay. And then one more question on your slide three, it showed that you had the smaller drop-off parking lot or parking area on the front street, Frontera, I believe it is. Is there one entrance? How, or is there two? Is there an exit? Do they have to go around? Do they have to back up? How do they get in and out?
Yeah, yeah. So. Yeah, yeah, so it, there's just one entrance off of Frontera for the project, and it'll be a shared access drive as Stephanie talked about. And that really worked well because it keeps a, a good distance from all of, all of Verden, the next street, so you don't have intersections that are too tight together, and you don't have too many curb cuts along Frontera there. So I think that shared access was a design feature that, that.
So you can get in that, you can drop off, you swing around, you have to back up.
So, so what do you do if you, if you take a, a close look, there is a turnaround
Okay.
parking spot, so it's like a parking spot, but you can't park there, and then you do a, a wide turn back out.
Emergency vehicles would go which way if there was an emergency? Would they use that?
Uh, no. So emergency vehicles, I mean, if they wanted to turn in just because that was the place they wanted to attack a fire, they, they could, but the, in terms of the design, there's a turnaround at the parking lot that's been designed with the proper radiuses and dimensions for OCFA turnaround in that, that location. So they would go back and they can turn around in the parking lot itself, and that has been reviewed by OCFA.
And I just have one more question. I'm sorry to hog the microphone here. I did send my question in a little bit earlier, and Stephanie was really good about answering it, and this does relate to emergency vehicles. With a facility like this, it's expected to have fire and ambulance at some point. And what is, is there a policy as far as it's residential backing up to the harbor and Marblehead? So is there a policy as far as the sirens coming in at, at hours, as far as cutting those sirens? Do we, did we get an answer on that?
Yeah, so that, that wouldn't be my province to say, I, I can say that, you know, the, the number of calls we estimated, you know, roughly two to three a month, conservatively, hopefully less than that. San Clemente, we're good healthy people. The, in terms of the sirens, I know that in a lot of areas, they don't have to have the lights and sirens, and there's kind of a trend away from that, just from other projects that I've worked on. But that really would be a call of OCFA. We, we would not be calling the, the OCFA or ambulance service for things that our staff, that the staff can handle themselves. So you're not going to get non-emergent calls where we would say, hey, don't, don't turn the lights and sirens on, you don't need it because this is not emergent. The only time they would come to the site is if it's, you know, a nine.
Right, right.
So that, then it's OCFA's call as to whether they use lights and sirens.
Stephanie, did we ever get internal policy on that?
Yes, Commissioner Prescott, thank you for asking. I did unfortunately get a response from our OCFA representative, Rich Swanson, and he did clarify that the ambulance company that the city uses is a private company. So his response was that typically with ambulatory services, they use sirens as needed based on current traffic and urgency of the situation. So I think it really depends on time of day, you know, level of traffic on the street, the level of urgency, you know, really taking in all of those different factors into consideration. And of course, you know, if there's, if it's at nighttime and there's no cars on the street, there probably is no need to use a siren. But at the same time, if it's in the middle of the day and there's a lot of, you know, cars backed up and they need to get through, then that would be a situation where they would more likely use sirens. So his overall response was that it's, you know, these ambulance companies, they are, they are contracted with the, with the city through a private company, but that if there was any sort of complaint about, you know, perceived or perceptions that the sirens are being overused, there is actually a process that residents can go through to file a complaint.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
No more questions.
Any other questions? Okay, I have one question for you, Stephanie, and it's on page four of our packet. Turn to that under development standards. And I, either I'm reading it incorrectly or you can clarify it for me. It says we are a congregate care facility, and then it says no congregate care units shall contain kitchens. Are you talking about memory care or the entire project? Because there are kitchens shown on the plans in the everything but the D units. It's right under development standards.
Sure, thank you, thank you, Chair Crandall for that question. I'm trying to go back and see. I will say that this was something that was carried over from the prior staff reports. And that's, it was basically the way that staff interpreted what land use classification the original project fell under. And at the time, staff determined it, it, under the different types of land use designations, that it was most similar to congregate care. And I want to say that that was specifically pertaining to the memory care component of it. You know, typically with assisted living, that is treated very differently from memory care where there are supportive services that are provided, but typically not to the same degree as memory care. So if my memory serves me correctly, I believe the intent of why this was included was that it was intended to apply to the memory care units specifically.
Yeah, I think that needs to be corrected in this report. So when it is reviewed by future bodies, it's clarified because nowhere in the body of the report does it say that we are making an exception to allow kitchens in the other area, or they're allowed by right. And I think that needs to be clear in this paragraph.
Chair Crandall, Chair, if I might, the, the report is part of the, the submitted record of, of this proceeding. The minutes will reflect a variation from what's provided in the, in the staff report, but we, we, we can't oh, can't alter this report to reflect that something different was submitted to a public meeting.
Okay, very good, because do we need to make a finding then that according to this report, they are allowed to have kitchens? I mean, I'm all for it, but I just want to make sure we documented it properly.
If the use is described as congregate care and it provides kitchens in, in some of the units, then then essentially the, the planning commission would need to make a determination to allow that, those kitchens in these units. However, since the kitchens are shown on the plans and the plans are referenced as part of the proposal, the approval of the project would inherently approve what is shown on the submitted plans. But if you'd like to call that out specifically, that could be done as part of the, part of the motion, should one be made.
Stephanie, is this just erroneous, or were you able to find a ordinance that actually says congregate care units are not supposed to have kitchens?
That was.
Rather than just a carryover?
Sure, sure.
I couldn't find the ordinance.
Yeah, so it's, it actually comes from the definition. So what's being quoted there is the definition for congregate care facilities.
Ordinance section cited right here, seventeen dot twenty-eight.
Yeah, well, it's apparently the definition of congregate care.
Right.
So can this be called something other than congregate care, or?
Yeah, and that's kind of where I'm, you know, what I'm trying, trying to take a look at, because there are a number of different definitions within our zoning code where they do overlap, because there are, you know, two different components within this, this, you know, project. And while the congregate care facility definition was intended to be, was intended to, to be for the memory care component, I'm not sure what definition it would, would apply to the assisted living component. So that's what I'm trying to take a look at right now.
To do that, we can, you can have it by the time we do our discussion.
Sure, yeah.
Mr. McGuire, do you have a comment on that?
Thank you, if, if, if I might, thank you. You know, one of the things I think is important is, again, the zoning code is not directly applicable to this property because we're in a specific plan, the Marblehead Inland Specific Plan. The zoning code can fill gaps and can help inform, and we are in a way a type of congregate care facility, but the congregate care facility provisions in the zoning code are really meant to apply to when you're asking for congregate care facilities in different zones in San, in San Clemente, like residential zones or other commercial zones where you're allowed to have congregate care. This project, like the artist project, we specifically designated within the institutional zone and within, with the amendment to the Marblehead Specific, Marblehead Inland Specific Plan, that these sorts of licensed residential care facilities could be permitted subject to a conditional use permit. But it's still helpful to look at some of the provisions for the congregate care in the zoning in terms of what their parking standards are and whether you can prove up different standards, and that's really where that discussion came from when the original artist staff report, it was kind of the departure for doing the the site-specific and project-specific parking study. But those zoning provisions are not the guiding principles for this project. The, the Marblehead Inland Specific Plan is the guiding principle, which says you can do this if this, if the planning commission issues a CUP. On the issue of the kitchens, you know, I, I can tell you that all of our residents are, have three meals a day served by the staff. They, what I've been told is that psychologically, it's nice, they feel like they're more at home if they have a kitchen or if their kids come, they want to bake cookies or the grandkids, et cetera. So a lot of the assisted living units do have kitchens, some have kitchenettes, but it's really, they, they are served their meals as part of the facility itself.
Great. I'm, I'm looking at this more as just to paperwork issue, and Mal, do you have any comment on how we should approach this?
Yes.
Or is it even an issue?
It's, it's likely not an issue. As, as was said, the plan trumps the zoning code in this instance. I am looking right now at that plan to drill down into it. I can, I can come back with some, some answers, but it's probably not an issue.
Okay. If we don't have any more questions?
I have another.
The applicant?
Okay. Not for the applicant per se, but I'm, I'm curious. In the resolution, we're approving this, we're being asked to approve this tonight, is that correct? But the prior project went to council. Why, why did the prior version go to council and not stop at planning commission? I guess that's a question maybe for Stephanie or, or Mr. McGuire.
Or Adam also.
Yeah, whoever.
Yeah, I can, I can jump in and answer. Thanks for the question, Commissioner McCann. So the prior project, what triggered the need to go to city council was that specific plan amendment. So again, nothing really changed within the specific plan, but because it was very ambiguous and did not, did not allow for a wide range of different types of institutional uses within that zone, the applicant did propose a, a text amendment to clarify what types of uses could be permitted in that zone. So really, that specific plan amendment is what triggered the need to go to city council, but it did go to planning commission first. So it went to two different public hearings.
Thank you.
Okay, we will close the question for staff and the applicant and open it up for public comments. I have cards for the three people that spoke during the presentation. Do any of them wish to speak at this point? Okay, there were three cards, which were Mark McGuire, Patrick Arden Mcangle, Kim Briggs, and Mark Ambrose. So I will turn their cards over and we will call on them now. We will call, close the public comment portion and open it up for commission discussion. Do we have any one who has any comments or questions or observations?
Sure.
Commissioner McCann?
Thank you. So I just want to mention that I, I'm in support of this project. I've seen it twice on the designer review subcommittee, and I think it's a great project. I think it's a big improvement, at least architecturally, over the artist project, which was previously approved. The, the applicant was responsive to, to comments, and, and I appreciate their outreach to the, to the neighbor, neighbors and neighboring associations, and I've reviewed the staff report and resolution. I agree with the findings that are in the staff report, and I'll be supportive of the project.
Very good. Any other comments?
First, I'd like to say, great staff report, very thorough. I think that, that really helped answer a lot of my questions. And then, you know, I think there's also, I agree with Commissioner Cam. Now, this is also a, a big improvement from the previous project. I think design architecturally, it's definitely much better, and it fits with that coastal design that you see in Marblehead as well as the neighboring condos. And then I also think this is just an awesome project for San Clemente. I think this fills a void in our housing and will hopefully allow some of our residents to age in place in town rather than having to go, go out. So, yeah, I'm supportive. And then in regards to the kitchen issue, I realize we're going to figure out the paperwork side of it, but I think from a conditional use permit standpoint, what we're being asked to is mitigate any impacts. I do not believe that having kitchens in these units is going to create an additional impact, so I have no issue assuming that the, the uses line up with kitchens being in these, in these units at this point.
I just want to make sure a resolution.
Yes, I totally agree. And if additional findings needed, then we will do that.
Any other comments or?
Mr. Chairman?
I was gonna say, I'm looking up the definition of the it says that with that plan or with that unit, it's defined that you're having three meals a day in some dining room facility. So I, I think the difference is, and I, I'm sure that's why it's also in the memory care, is that if you're gonna, if they're gonna be designated as congregate units, you don't have to put in a kitchen because you're, you're offering a dining facility somewhere. And this, and it also says, depending on the number of units, depends on what you can call your facility.
So, so it does not actually say no congregate care units shall contain kitchens?
Right, that's by definition, the congregate care.
But by definition, it says it could.
Not by this definition.
No?
No kitchen. If you're looking up on the definition, congregate care.
Would you read that again then?
In congregate, you don't have a kitchen because your plan, you have three meals a day in a separate facility outside your unit. And it's by, as a ninety seventy dash one, according to residential care facilities, I guess it's a state code. It has to be a nursing care.
Okay.
So in congregate, you're not required to have kitchen.
Not required.
Not required, but you could.
There's no kitchen because you have, you, your plan includes three meals a day in a separate corporate dining room.
But does it say you cannot have a kitchen?
If you have a kitchen, then it's called assisted living.
Oh, okay. Stephanie, can we have assisted living in an institutional zone?
Yes, and I, I do want to clarify that with the previously approved specific plan amendment, it specifically said that memory care facilities, as well as other institutional uses, are conditionally permitted in this zone. So the intent was that it's, it's almost like we had the foresight back in two thousand and twenty to make sure that it was open enough to allow for different types of uses that were consistent with the institutional zoning designation. So it can be permitted through the CUP process.
There's, there's more assisted units than, than conjugate, right?
Yes.
By the state rule, it says if that's true, then you can call yourself an assisted living facility.
And Mal, you concur, or what's your thought?
Yes, Ms. Rojas is exactly right. The plan is broad enough to encompass what's being proposed. This also falls outside of the ambit of the code because it is governed by the plan itself, and there's a footnote added in two thousand and twenty that provides for exactly these types of uses. So we are well within.
So we don't need to make any comment or any observation to that.
It's clean.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Okay. Since I don't see any other questions, do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion by Commissioner McCann.
I'll second that.
Yes, for the record, please.
I move that. the planning commission, this is regarding resolution number PC twenty-two dash zero zero one. I move that we approve master project twenty-one dash one fifty-eight consisting of conditional use permit twenty-one dash one fifty-nine, architectural permit twenty-one dash one sixty, and site plan permit twenty-one dash one sixty-one for Frontera Memory Care and Assisted Living Facility. A request to construct and operate a twenty-four-bed memory care and a sixty-three-unit assisted living facility on two-point-five acres of vacant land. Frontincaia Frontera located at accessory parcel number six-seven-nine dash zero-two-one dash zero-five.
Second, we have a motion by McCann, second by Cosgrove. And we'll call a vote. Commissioner Prescott?
Aye.
Commissioner McHacken?
Aye.
Commissioner Tyler?
Aye.
Commissioner McCann?
Aye.
Commissioner Cosgrove?
Aye.
Commissioner Camp?
Aye.
And Commissioner Crandall is an I, so seven zero zero. So congratulations, and look forward to projects moving along quickly. Thank you.
Good project.
The next item is item nine, new business. Adam, do we have any new business?
We have no new business.
Do we have any old business?
None of that either.
One thing I will bring up is in talking with Adam, I think they're gonna plan a study session in the future on the downtown parking study, which will be involved in some decisions we have to make. So if you go online and do some study ahead of time, it's I think it would be beneficial for everyone and the projects that we've got coming up in the future. Do we have any reports of commissioners and staff?
I have just a comment on the future agenda. It looks like we received public comment for an item that's on the next meeting. Can I just request that that stays in the binder, because only they clean these out? It was in those yellow manila.
It's the one we talked about, the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, so like that could just stay in there as context for the next meeting.
Yes, I'll have staff keep that in there.
I made a note on it, but it's just, you know, it seems like it will be useful when I actually get more information on the project.
Okay, if anybody would like those, those correspondence kept in their folder, leave them in your folder, if you, if you've read it and you're okay. Slide it here and just take it out. Yeah.
Any other comments?
Yeah. I received, I don't know if you're, this is what you're talking about. But this piece here on the Pilate.
Yes, that's been through design review.
Yeah, so why did we receive it again? Because it hasn't gone to commission yet, or? Okay, and that's coming up on the next.
Yes, so that, I believe that correspondence is from a neighbor. And it, it relates to a project that is scheduled for the next planning commission.
So typically, I won't respond to those to the public until we have our public meeting.
Okay.
And we can, any comments you have on that, we can discuss during the agendas.
Okay, it's a little cryptic. I mean, there's comments on here. So I guess we'll just talk about it at that time, yeah.
Exactly. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Okay, and we will be adjourning to the see, I don't see a study session, the regular meeting of February second, twenty-twenty-two.
And that meeting will be at six o'clock, because there's no study session.
Good job, very good.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Do we have a second on that? Commissioner McCacken? We'll have a vote. Commissioner Prescott?
Yes.
Commissioner McCacken?
Aye.
Commissioner Tyler?
Aye.
Commissioner McCann?
Aye.
Commissioner Cosgrove?
Aye.
Commissioner Camp?
Aye.
And Commissioner Crandall is also an I, passes seven zero. So meeting is adjourned.